Oh, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting at 6:26 PM. The record shows that Art Zabel, Dennis Meyer, Rick Miller, Dan Wing, and Jolene Peiper are all in attendance. We need to elect a pro temp, please.
I move Dan Wing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Whatever.
Are those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dan, you're the chair.
All right. Call to order.
Call to order and then you can read this first.
This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84, Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is not intended for consideration in action. Roll call has already shown a quorum. We'll go to three. Budget review including capital for each department. Start off with A, Police Department. If the chief would like to come forward.
If I could, just one suggestion. The Finance Director did prepare a quick overview.
Okay.
That we could provide just to give a little bit of context before we get into the departments.
All right. Before each department or?
This overview for the overall budget.
All right.
Okay, with the discussion tonight is on the 2021 budget overview, or 2021 budget, just as laying some groundwork as far as how the budget runs and the allowable levy that the state will give a village. When you have the budget from the prior year, the only way we can increase that levy from the prior year is our net new construction. Net new construction for 2020 to add to the budget was a 3.2 percent. There's also all new debt service that we have, so we have $321,253 in new debt service that's also able to increase your levy to cover that. And then we also have a couple other levy increase alternatives, the transfer from jurisdictional transfer from Goldendale Road and some refunded rescinded taxes that we had from the prior year. So all in all, as far as the levy increase amount that we can go from the prior year is about $706,769. The projected budget that we're presenting tonight is balanced as far as it will take us to that maximum levy that the state allows. The increase for that is, the actual levy increase is 5.92 percent, or is 5.45 percent. It does show a slight tax increase of 27 cents per thousand. That's based on an estimated equalized value of 98.8 percent. There's a couple of new positions added in this budget. Would you look through it? It would be a records clerk for the Police Department, the Fire Department exchanging some paid on premise positions for some full time. There's also estimated salary increases for general employees, a police contract that's already increased, it's outstanding for 2021, Fire and DPW. Some of the major changes you'll find is a building inspection, moving from actually internal staff moving to a contract employer. So those are some of the things we can look at when we're going through the budget.
All right. Police Chief?
Thank you. Just an overview of our budget. Very similar to last year, I think you'll see the increases coming from medical supplies that was due exclusively to the increased use of Narcan. We are invoicing, trying to get reimbursed for those doses, doses when we use them, but the uses went up significantly. The training reflects Lexapro, which was approved last year. Part of that was a $13,000 per year moving forward. We moved that to the training account. So that training account, part of it dropped off as the emergency dispatching training was completed last year, but then there was the increase due to that, to the Lexapro. The squad cars are up slightly. We are requesting two squad cars as in years past. A slight increase just due to the anticipated increase in the cost of the Ford Explorers for 2021. And the personnel was a carryover from a request for 2020, and that will be a records that would deal primarily with property inventory and open records requests, which will allow us to, I think, better use the patrol officer on day shift that's assigned to the property room right now, and just a great deal of his time is used on in that property room instead of being out on the road. We'd like them getting back on the road. Open records request is divided between one of the lieutenants and three different dispatchers, so we'd like to consolidate that under one position just for efficiency purposes. And those were the primary changes to our budget for 2021. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Oh, wait a minute. On the clerk request that you're in the full-time clerk position for records, you said that was handled now by officers, not by the dispatch?
Part of the property portion of that is handled by a day shift officer who does all the property. He is the primary property custodian and just does a lot of that during his regular patrol time. The open records portion of it is handled by some dispatchers and a lieutenant.
So that's, and so what you're looking for to do now is to put one person to handle all three and freeing up the officer and freeing up the dispatchers?
That's correct. There will probably still be some assignments the dispatchers will assist with just because of the load of requests that we do receive, and when that person is not working, we'll still need someone to respond to those open record requests, but it'll take a lot of the burden off of them.
Have we ever done a study recently on dispatch and keeping it or moving it to county? I know every now and then people keep mentioning those changes are current, and I wonder if we ever looked at that.
The last time we looked at this was when Chief Hale was here, and that probably goes back, I want to say, seven years, I'd be guessing.
Yeah, I just wanted, I think the Falls now moved to Otis, and I don't know of any other places, but I was just wondering if that was still an available option?
Yeah, something we haven't looked at in quite a while.
Because I know when you were talking about that in the past, they were, one of the reasons for keeping dispatch was for the records and the ability to have people there to man that office. I see we're adding one now, so this makes me think about it.
A question, Chief Snow. With the schools possibly closing, do school resource officers get utilized in the community then?
That is what we did last year. We just put them back on the road and assigned them to an actual shift, an actual rotation.
Do we then have to increase the amount of pay that comes from the village?
And that was not discussed last year. It was not brought up by the school district at all. It may be a discussion that is raised if it's for an extended period of time.
So right now, the two officers, 25 percent of their pay and benefits come from the Village of Germantown?
Correct. And right now, they are in the schools full time. They are utilizing them there as they have in years past.
All right. I would just like to note that Trustee Phil Hudson has joined us. Any other questions? Okay, now we'll go to emergency government.
I wouldn't entertain any questions there. Budget is fairly similar to last year, almost identical, other than the wage increase, I believe.
I'd also like to tell Jolene, if she's not feeling well, thank you for calling in. I don't think we need her call anymore, right? Now that we have a quorum here? So if you want to leave, you can, Jolene.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for calling.
Bye.
Any other questions for emergency government? Pretty straightforward. All right, let's move along to canine fund. C.
Canine fund, the fund very healthy. Our second dog, as you know, is on the road now, and the budget is very healthy to take care of any anticipated costs moving forward with either of the dogs. Would I would take any questions on that?
Seeing none, we'll move on to D, Asset Forfeiture.
Asset forfeiture, not a lot being done with that account since the changes to the funds and all that's, I guess, divvied up now. So we don't anticipate a lot coming into that account moving forward, or a lot being used out of that account.
I just, I have one quick one. On this forfeiture, you used to, whenever there was somebody picked up for drugs or whatever, they used to be able to forfeit the stuff. They can't do that anymore? Has that been changed?
It's, there has been some changes to that, and what can actually be taken in as asset forfeiture, those rules changed fairly significantly, so not as much is taken in. And I'm not sure how it was done in the past, but I think the drug unit typically divvied that out based on who you had assigned to the drug unit, or how many people were assigned to that. I don't know if you know any?
I think the asset forfeiture was forfeitures from those larger criminal activities, and this was federal, and we did get some from the county, and then we kind of had some local. The federal's pretty much dried up, hasn't it? And I don't think they're having as much going forward.
Right.
Longer for the actual police revenues for it. So we're just keeping the count open mostly for the local and the county revenues if we have it.
Yeah. If you look here, it looks like they only received about $600 last year, about halfway through the year, and we budgeted a thousand, and this year the budget is zero, so on the federal level. So the assumption is there's not going to be a lot of revenues.
Yeah.
All right, Honor Guard.
Honor Guard, minimal expenses taken out of that account. We are fully staffed in the Honor Guard and don't anticipate any changes moving forward. But I would take any questions on that?
And again, these are, the revenues are covered by individuals, not necessarily by the budget, correct?
Correct. The Honor Guard is donation funded as well.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Fire Department.
The Fire Department's operational budget is very similar to last year with the exception of one line item, and that is our vehicle repair and maintenance and lease line, account number 5500. I did increase that by $15,000 for next year. Over the last two years, we have had significant costs on the repairs to our vehicles. As we sit today, I am already over budget for this year, so to try and mitigate going over again next year, I did increase that line by $15,000. In the Personnel Section, as Finance Director Rath stated before, we do have the conversion of the three paid on premise positions to full-time positions. The reasoning for that is our paid on premise is a very dwindling supply of people, to the point that I have been paying paid on premise people overtime this last year to fill those spots. It has not been entirely filled by paid on premise people, but also some full-time people. The conversion of those three positions will allow us to actually have a minimum staffing level so that we could run short if needed to next year and try to alleviate some of the overtime that we have been incurring. I'm not stating that all of the overtime that we have this year is due to those positions. Obviously, we've had some weird situations this year that we had to have some people in for, but I anticipate having a great reduction in overtime next year by the conversion of those three positions. For capital budget for next year, I do have $300,000 for the replacement of the secondary mounted ambulance, and $200,000 for new cardiac monitors. Our current cardiac monitors will be at end of life at the end of next year, so we would like to purchase new ones to get us back into ones that are supported with software updates and the more current algorithms that determine what the outcomes of the patients are.
All right, any questions from the board? Dennis?
John, in regard to those cardiac monitors, is that every five years or four years for replacement?
It's every 10.
10?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I could, just one other thing that I'd like to point out for the board's background, just a change that we made to the budget that was submitted. There was another piece of equipment, and I'll let Chief Delane explain a little bit more what it was. A portable piece of equipment for some accident responses. We looked at it as we were trying to get the budget to the point of balancing it. We weren't able to fit that in, but I did want to make sure the board was aware that that was one of those items that was requested that's not included in the numbers that you have before you.
I did have included in my original budget $40,000 for battery powered extrication equipment. They allow us more portability and mobility. The current extrication equipment we use are hard mounted to our vehicles via a gas powered, excuse me, by a hydraulic pump. We do have the capability of removing a gas powered pump from the truck to power those, but we have had some circumstances in the recent future that we've either A, had to enter a building with those tools, and running a gas powered unit inside that building is less than ideal. And we've also had an animal rescue, that the sound of those tools would spook the animal. So we're trying to come up with new ways to perform these rescue tasks that were needed in a better fashion for the environment that we're working in and for any people or animals that we're working with.
All right. Trustee Miller?
Yeah, on the vehicle repair and maintenance, last year, if I remember, the ambulances were in bad shape, right? The re-chassising and whatever, those were not well. And didn't that contribute to some of the expense on that line item?
It did contribute to quite a bit of expense on that line item, excuse me, line item. This year, it's been the engines and our ladder truck that have had significant costs associated with them.
So not as much on the ambulances this year?
That is correct. The ambulances, we've been limiting some of the work that we're going to do on, knowing that we have a new one that should be here within the next couple of weeks. So anything that has been, I don't want to say minor, we had some trim come off the ambulance, we didn't replace the trim, stuff like that, we've kind of further on, knowing that.
Doing what you have to, but not anymore.
Right.
Yep, okay. All right, thank you. Trustee Zabel?
At General Government Finance, there was one deal to upgrade the clerk, and there was a $12,000 increase, and we agreed to only $6,000, but it has to go to the board yet. What's in the budget here is the $12,000 increase. So I just want to make everybody aware, if the board approves it at the next meeting, that number would go down. I suppose we could do it here too, but it would drop. But what's in the budget is, I believe, $12,000.
Well, when it would get to board, that has to go through the board yet, correct?
Right, right. I believe that's correct. It should be at the next board meeting, so if they make the decision, it can always be adjusted here.
Correct. It's on Monday night's agenda.
Okay. That way, we can discuss it hopefully with the full board and see what happens. The other thing I want to trust, there doesn't appear to be a lot of money to bump these people from POPs up to full time. Am I reading it right, it's only $2,500 per person per year?
So the budgeted amount for paid on premises last year was $150,000. We're putting that $150,000 towards the bumping them to full time. And in addition to that, we're utilizing some of the overtime costs that we had incurred last year to fund those people as well, on the assumption that overtime should go down due to the, our ability to have a minimum level of staffing, instead of always trying to find somebody to come up with the minimum.
Yeah, and I'm looking at the one page where they have the new employee's request. They say Fire, we got three full time, and the salary's only gone up, $2,121 for the three people.
Right, I think as.
This is over and above the other, correct?
Right, we're moving it, it's $150,000 originally for paid on premise, and to move that up to three full time employees, that difference because of the insurances and the changes in the overtime and other areas, it would only be a small increase, which is why John thought to do that, to make it, his department run better. So there wasn't really a huge cost for that transfer.
And the other thing is additional lieutenant. Where does that lieutenant fit in?
So right now, our.
That's a $7,500.
Our hierarchy and our chain of command is very flat because of the, all of the officers of our department, with the exception of the Fire Chief or the Deputy Chief. Prior to all the conversions that we made, all those officer positions were paid on call positions. It's very awkward and flat to, operationally, to make this work with paid on call personnel. Number one, you would have full time people answering to paid on call people if we were to continue with the paid on call officers. In addition to that, we only have five paid on call people left, the ones who are truly just only respond when there is a call. So we find ourselves in situations where we go into, let's say, a structural fire or a large extrication, or any type of hazmat situation, where the only officer who potentially would be there is the on-duty battalion chief. And we're also in a situation is if that battalion chief is on vacation, that position is being filled by a firefighter. So our span of control is very narrow. We don't have other people to officially come up and be in charge, or to take a group of firefighters and have someone in charge of that group. I'll use the example of a house fire. The battalion chief pulls up, he's in charge of that incident. The fire truck pulls up, and there's not a dedicated officer on that fire truck or fire engine to be in charge of that crew. It could just be whoever we have that day that could be working. And in the absence of that battalion chief, whoever those people are on that fire truck could be the one in charge of that incident.
So how does one lieutenant fit into that?
It's one lieutenant per shift.
Oh, it's per shift, it's not, and then again, that only adds $7,500 to the budget?
It's the paid differential they would give on the spot to that person. So it's not a position, it's money's allowed, so he can dedicate a lieutenant at a time you need it.
Okay, so that basically would be a rotating lieutenant per se. You would make a decision at the time that occurs, who's going to be that person, or are you going to designate people in advance for shift?
It would be a promotional opportunity, and the thought process behind that then is there would always be one of those two in the station. If the battalion chief took a vacation day, that lieutenant would not be allowed to take a vacation day. If the lieutenant needed a vacation, the battalion chief wouldn't, so there would always be an officer that would be in charge of either A, a crew, or B, the whole incident, but we would never be without some sort of supervision.
But that, again, goes back to the trust, and for they get the entries paid, they would only get the entries paid when they were designated, or when they physically are on site as a lieutenant, or in control at the time the other, the shift commander's not there?
No, they would be lieutenant, lieutenant, that's their position.
Okay, so the pay doesn't change every time, it's just the.
So it increases by a current staff member to a lieutenant.
Okay. Does it, when I look at the line item for salaries on your budget for regular and full time, last year, we only budgeted $683, or looks like we're going to spend $809, and this year, we're budgeting $788. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to me if I'm adding these ester bodies, or ester pay, that that number, that 788, it would be a fair number if I'm already over at this year without those. Is that all overtime that we missed?
That's a lot of overtime. The example I gave you is a very simple example of how it actually creates some overtime. We have had situations in this last year unforeseen that it would happen this way, but we have people who come in on a trade day, so they traded with one employee because they must have had some type of event going on in their personal lives, so they traded, which usually is a wash in pay, no one gets paid, but technically, that person is not really getting paid for that day, the other person's getting paid for the day he's working for them. However, that may be the most senior person on that shift that day when a battalion chief has taken vacation. So now this person gets elevated, and per the contract, that elevation in position gets a differential in pay between what they're normally make and the battalion chief's paid because now they're acting. So they're still being now paid that differential in pay, and if they're there over their 56 hours, that is potential now the differential in pay plus overtime because it's outside their normal shift, because we don't have adequate supervision.
I think, and I feel sorry for a county and department keeping track of these hours. Now I know why the person's there.
That's exactly right.
If I might just add another explanation to the salaries in the Fire Department, if you look at the history in salaries going back a few years, it seems we're somewhat under budgeted just in general, and so some of that salary increase with showing the overtime and showing the differentials to get 2021 to be more what it's going to be, because it seems like we're having to do some catch-ups. So that's kind of why it looks a lot of whack. It's mostly also to capture that reality that the amount of money we're spending on the Fire Department for salaries is a little bit higher than what we had anticipated.
I used to say, because in 2018, it was 505, but in 2019, it was 803.
If you look at the bottom, just look at the.
No, the total, I'm just looking at the full time.
Yeah.
If I could, I think that is kind of a good point that the Finance Director made. If you look at the total salaries and wages, and the 2019 actuals were $1,175, and 2020, we're projecting it's going to be a total of $1,207,000, and what we budgeted in 2021 is $1,215,000. So it, and there are some wages increases in there, but I think it gets us closer to actual, and the way we're trying to do that is by using full time positions, replacing the paid on premise with full time positions in order to hopefully reduce that overtime. And we'll see as 2021 goes on, but we're putting more dollars in there to try to get us closer to what we've, it looks like we're actually spending.
Trustee Myers?
John, do lieutenants or the officers, do they get paid overtime?
Yes, they would be our employees. The only people who are on salary at the Fire Department is anybody with the chief after their name.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
I did want to make one more comment, talking about in the negotiations that we're going through currently with the firefighters union, we are trying to eliminate that step pay when they're acting as a battalion chief and trying to create it as a stipend pay. So if they are acting as a battalion chief. So if they are acting as a battalion chief for the day, for whatever reason, they're going to get a step dollar amount instead of necessarily overtime on a differential or overtime on their normal hours.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to G, recreation.
Good evening. The 2021 budget that you have before you, there are, I'll, I'll see significant changes from what we're maybe used to discussing here, and I'll go through those. First of all, maybe touching on, on revenues. As you can imagine, our department has felt some of the impacts of COVID here in 2020. And as we look into 2021, depending upon which crystal ball you look into, there are going to be some impacts. And we've had quite a bit of discussion both at the staff level and also at the administrative level here as to forecasting our revenues. So bottom line, we do show a decrease of approximately $150,000 in the revenues. We've been pretty, I would say, very consistent with our program revenues for, for a handful of years. Kudos to our, our recreation staff for, for that. The premise or the assumption that, that is in this budget from a revenue perspective is that January through May, we would be at roughly a 75% of typical. What is typical? Well, the last typical year I guess we had was 2019. With the hope that by the time it's June of next year, we're back in business at a, hopefully 100% of what we've been used to doing. So you'll see there was a decrease in both 7310, 7310 account, which are the recreation program fees, and also a decrease in the 7318, which is the facility use fees. You recall that for the first time in several years, the department was charged by the school district for using the facilities. So this was an account where we tried to set aside some monies to be able to be in a position to, to make those payments. That line item will match an expense account that I will get to later. So in general, that's, that's where we're at from a revenue side. This budget, we're trying to project for you guys a very similar budget from a self-supporting standpoint. If you, if you hop over to the, the recreation expenditure side of things, there are reductions also in about $150,000. I guess kind of comes close to matching our projected decreases in, in revenues. Some areas that we made some modifications. The 1,800 account at the top, we reduced our part time salaries by roughly 26,000. These are the individuals who teach the very, very programs that we have, contracted services employees, payroll employees, that type of thing. Uh, if you go down a little farther on the sheet, this is the second piece to the, the costs for running a program, and that's the 3,800 account. We decreased that 30,000. Again, some assumptions being made that if our numbers aren't quite as good till next summer, we can make some reductions there. The 3910 account is the facility rental expense. We bumped that down. That's at 65,000. So that's, that matches the, the estimated monies in the 7318 revenue account. You may recall that when we had the discussions with the school district and we tried to project for the board, what are those fees going to, how are they going to impact us? And we had about an 80, estimated $80,000 year number one and closer to 100,000 year number two. I'm pleased to say that it never, never got that close. Granted, we, we don't have a full year of that because COVID hit in March and we were not using school facilities from March through into June. So essentially, the 65,000 reflects what we feel is much closer to what we ended up, we will end up realizing there. Two other accounts, printing and publishing, the 7,600 account. That's been decreased from 24,000 to 8,000. We briefly talked with the park and rec commission about the, this, this account the other night at our meeting. Essentially what we're looking to do, we've been printing and mailing three recreation brochures to the residents each year. This would basically mean that we would go to online distribution. We would utilize social media. I don't have any stats on this, but I know there are some departments that this is how they, they go about doing their business. So money is in there for still doing it professionally. We're very proud of our, of our brochure and we still would have somebody professionally typeset that for us. Last but not least, the 8,200 account down at the bottom is down about 40,000. That's an account that we have miscellaneous park related things through the years. We bought picnic tables and benches. We've put up signs in the park. We've purchased supplies for the spray ground or, not the spray ground, but the, oh gosh, over at-
Splash Park.
Splash Park, but also over on Main Street at Hopstrasse for the skateboarders. Excuse me. Little, little brain problem there. So bottom line, again, our budget, the expenses have, have decreased or proposed to decrease by 10.5% or roughly 150,000. If all goes well, this budget would again be at about an 80% self-supporting nature. As you know, we've been proud of that fact for, for several years. So with that, I, if there's any questions on the rec budget, I'd be happy to, to answer those.
Well, I'll note that President Walter has joined us, so I'm handing over the chair to him.
Thank you, trustee Wing for taking over in my absence. I apologize for being late. I got held up at, at work, so I'm sorry for that. Anybody have any questions in regards to recreation department and what's been presented?
Mine's in capital. Are we taking capital at the same time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So two items that are, do you want to, before your question, should I just explain the two items?
Yeah, explaining the two items might be a lot easier.
Sure. So there's, there's two items totaling $95,000 that are listed here. The first one is for 80,000. And as you know, we, we just opened the fest hall at Dinesville Park. The parking lot, the park pathways, we'd like to finish the park off by paving those for, I guess, maintenance and accessibility reasons. We'd also like to have some type of screening structure that, for, as you know, the only bathrooms that are out at that park are in the Bass Bell Museum. For different events, you have to bring in portable bathrooms. So, so that's the large ticket item there. The second item is, is really a feasibility study to take a look at the future of, of the Kinderburg Park splash pad. And I guess this kind of goes in concert with some discussion relative to the playground. The playground is, is going to be about 22 years old. We've been kind of, the last several years, been replacing playgrounds when they have gotten to that 20 to 25 year range. We also have a, an aging splash pad that we put money into. We also have, you know, challenges with parking and use of the splash pad and how it relates to our neighborhoods around there. So this would be a, really an analysis of what do we want to do with the playground? What do we want to do with the splash pad? You definitely need a playground for that park. Is there a better location in the community if you decided to move the splash pad? So it would be a little bit more user friendly when it comes to parking and access. So that's kind of what's described in my write-up is really taking a look before we, we move forward. And, and this was something that, that we brought forth from a staff level and we, it was decided to, to not include it in last year's 20, or this year's 2020 budget.
Restroom enclosure is out at, at Dinesville. What do you, are you thinking about building some type of thing in which to put porta potties inside of? Or are you thinking about building a structure?
Thinking about a concrete, and we've done this in other parks already, a concrete slab fenced area with, you know, you've seen this, the decor, and I don't say decorative, but the slats there to kind of soften the view, so to speak. We've done it at Spasland. Where else? Well, Spasland's, I guess, the exact-
Yeah, that was a long time ago. That's been out of there for a while. Because we got, got you with two Spasland now.
I mean, we're not looking at a wood type structure because I think you end up with maintenance and replacing those. But again, I refer to the one that we have at, at Spasland that, that encloses the dumpster, that makes it a little bit less of an eyesore. So that's, that's what we're thinking about there.
I would think about the restroom enclosure. I thought you were talking about that, not, not say the dumpster.
We are, we are.
So you, so you basically would have, instead of having on a grass or gravel bed, you'd have it on a concrete bed and-
Yep.
Were you to bring porta potties in and out, or would you leave them there on a regular basis?
I think we've been, the park and rec commission has been talking about the best way to handle that. And I think we're still working on that, but larger sized groups. I, I don't know if we want to just have them kind of out in the open. But we might, might end up saying, you know what? We'll have a couple of those there on a regular basis like we do at some of the other parks. At some of the other parks, we have, you know, just wood around those. And again, those, those warp, they don't look that good over time. So, but the main, the main focus of those monies is to, to finish the park off with paving a lot and the pathways.
When you replace the play equipment in the other parks, do you do a feasibility study? Or you just draw and ask for different opinions in which they come up with ideas?
With the playground?
Yeah.
Well, it usually starts with, you know, we, we put together an RFP. We put together, what are we looking to do? What are the age groups of the kids that we're trying to serve, two to five, five to 12? They design within the budget we give them typically is how it works. So if you had as an example, we just are finishing the Weedenbach Playground project because it's a smaller neighborhood park, that budget money was, was less than say, what you might want to do in, in a larger, more of a community park where you want to have a larger structure. So we've, we've taken all those factors into account.
I just, my question is, did you do a feasibility study to do those? Or you're just still going through an RFP, asking for different opinions? Sort of a, you design it, give us a cost and we'll decide what to do?
I, I think that those projects to just simply go into an existing park and to replace playground equipment, if you feel the location is the best one, we have not done a feasibility study. I think the splash pad itself has become a very popular amenity. It's also been an amenity that has come with some challenges as far as the impacts to the neighborhood, the impacts to the community parking and how, how it relates to the, the whole, you know, I'm sure the people in that area love having the splash pad in there right close to them. But every year we do have some, some challenges with that. And, and this is maybe a, a good time before you replace the playground is to look at the whole picture and see what the best for the, you know, the future of an outdoor type of aquatic experience is for the community.
Would you think that maybe to do it similar to a playground, just draw and ask people to render opinion and render a couple of different ideas for you and give you some cost on it and make a decision by letting the people look at them once you're done instead of doing a feasibility study?
Kind of like this process. I suppose anything is possible. I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah, I, when I see feasibility studies, I always figure, okay, I'm paying somebody to do something where if I could just draw and ask a couple of planters or whatever to come up with some ideas of what you would do and what type of equipment and what type of cost you have. Present that to the community in that area to see what they think about it and see which one they would choose would be different than trying to put money out for a professional coming and do a feasibility study.
I think we might be talking about the same thing because feasibility study would be done by, say, a park planning firm, but yeah.
Don't you think this is a little bit larger than what would be under any other park like Weedenbach or Spasland or Hopstrasse where you're just looking at equipment? This has to do with a, a facility that is an attraction to that park. And I think what Mark is looking at is, does it make sense to keep that attraction there? Not that you want to remove it from the neighborhood that's used to having it close by. But let's face it, that particular playground is pretty far away from the street, pretty far away from any place you're going to park your car. So if you've got little kids that want to go, go to that, if you're not walking from their surrounding neighborhoods and you're driving to it, it takes a little bit to get there and it takes a little bit of time. And you've got, you know, two year olds, three year olds, four year olds and you, you're walking them almost probably a little less than an eighth mile to get there, depending on where you're parking. It, it could become somewhat troublesome, especially if you have a couple of them with you or if you have a stroller or, or whatever. So I think what Mark is looking at is, does it make sense once we're replacing not only just the playground equipment, but does it make sense to keep this here by either enhancing it or looking for some way to support it so it has a better ease of use?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do I need a feasibility study to tell me that?
I don't think we've ever not looked at the possibility of an expert that goes beyond what, what our expertise is. I mean, can we say, well, we think it makes better sense to go over here, but why is that? And maybe we don't have all the, the other experience that a group might have when they have other opportunities to look at other communities that have done it successfully or have changed it so it becomes more successful because they've been involved. So I'm never one to, to walk away from somebody that has the more expertise in something than I do, but basically because they're doing it every day. Or they're working with those groups every day where we're just doing it as one of many.
No, I, I agree. And again, if you look at people that would do this work like we've done in the past, where you have three or four different playground planners who come in and do your, your different playground areas, they would do this too. I mean, you're sort of stuck on the area because of sewer water and the things you need. You're not going to put a lot of money into moving your sewer and a lot of money into moving your water. You're going to take and either expand it or you're going to take and modify it. The thing is, is to find out which one of those. And if in the process of doing that, do you create some type of parking or parking facility that would make it easier for them to get into? Either on the one side of the hill or end or like-
On the roadway.
Mm-hmm. There's other questions in there, but again, do I need a feasibility study to tell me that? Or can I just rely on people looking at it and giving me all kinds of ideas and me choosing?
Trustee Miller.
What's the scope of the feasibility study? I mean, are you looking at replacing the splash pad, making it closer, parking? You know, what's included in that?
I'll just read from what I wrote in here because what I did was I, I, I went to a park planning firm that, that I've worked with through the years and asked if they've done similar type work. So it would be a site analysis of a playground and splash pad, parking assessment, internal circulation pattern, and what adjacent support amenities, restrooms, might be needed to determine the suitability and best location for these features. Two to three conceptual layouts, opinion of, of the potential costs that we might be looking at. So that allows you to say, how maybe would this fit into a future five year capital improvement program? So you'd have, you know, those drawings and the, and the rendering. So it would be a report, if, you know, you think about other projects we've done that are a little larger than a replacement of a playground. We've, we've started with, you know, kind of this conceptual, what are we trying, what is our goal? What are we trying to reach? And it usually includes some kind of public input, public- And it usually includes some kind of public input, public component in that to get the thoughts from the, the community. You're welcome.
Other questions? No other questions, recommendations, motions? Okay. Then are you ready to go to the next department?
Do you want the rec facility fee fund? Anything to touch on that?
Yep, let's go to that.
Okay, so historically, we had three accounts. As you know, the, the school account was eliminated with the IGA. So we have two accounts, the village portion of it and then the athletic club. So soccer, baseball, football contribute through the agreements that the council, excuse me, the village board approves each year. So we're showing a proposed budget with interest of revenues of 32,625, expenditures of 25,000. So we do have balances in both of these accounts, not a huge balance in the athletic field account, but typically we use the monies in there to, they go back into the fields, whether they're in, a lot of it is for, for turf-type expenditures or maybe irrigation-type So that's kind of, I don't know if you have questions about that particular account, but.
All right, any questions? Okay, next one, senior van? Oh, I'm sorry, senior center?
Okay, senior budget, certainly like recreation, is impacted by probably more than any area with COVID. We have had some things come back over at the senior center. The rentals have picked up again. They're pretty solid every weekend. And also our senior van program with modifications is, is picked up again. What hasn't picked up is, you know, the, the large group activities for our seniors. There are some small group activities. In any event, we're also looking at, at hopefully better days ahead. We did decrease the revenue portion of this budget by $9,000. Essentially, I think the biggest area of impact is on trips and tours. Mary, our senior coordinator, at this point in time, as she's talked to other senior directors and followed the lay of the land, is you're probably not going to see trips and tours start until, you know, next summer at best. So anyway, we've decreased the, the revenues. We've also decreased expenses by about $8,000, I believe it is. So that's, I guess that's really kind of the programming, less programming, less revenue until we get up and running in a better safety and health state. And again, we've, we've reduced a few of the expenditures related to trips and related to some programs.
No questions? Okay, senior van?
Senior van, well, as I just mentioned, we have, we have picked up some on our use of the senior van after being shut down for a few months. Essentially, we, the fares from the, the ridership go into an account. And you remember in 2018, I believe it was, we utilized those monies in great part to purchase a new fully accessible senior van. So I don't know if you have questions, but we are proposing about $1,000 less than what we would have been proposed in the, for the 2020 budget.
Trustee Myers.
Mark, is that, is that, for that van, is that turnover every seven years with the amount of money that it costs?
You know what, I, I guess I'd have to go back and take a look. I mean, if we averaged $3,000 to $4,000 a year, I believe we paid.
We added some money.
The village added some money to that.
Yes.
But I believe the purchase price was around 55,000, I think it was. And we, I think what the board did was they didn't want to.
Forty-three is what Kim just said.
Forty-three, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was originally thirty-five, but then we got the other one.
So I guess you could say that seven years times four is 28, so it'd take you a little longer. Maybe that was part of our discussion. You didn't, you wanted to keep a little bit of a balance in the account for the, the next time you need to replace it.
Yeah, I think the last van lasted, I think the last van lasted for 10 years. I think we bought it in '08 and we replaced it in '18.
That sounds, that sounds pretty accurate.
More than I do. I picked it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? No other questions? All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Anything else that's on the agenda that's been discussed previously, go back to, or any other topics in regards to the budget as listed? No? Okay. Then the next meeting is Wednesday, October 7th at 6:00 PM, and the meeting after that is Thursday, October 15th at 6:00 PM. If there's nothing else, we can be adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight, and if we are televised, thank you all for watching. Have a good night. Return.